But I couldn't see the clock. Okay, 6:30 we do have a forum, it's 6:32 actually, might be 3 by now. We do have a forum, so we're going to call the workshop to order, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Donna.
Uh...
Is there anything particularly you want to go over?
There's not anything in workshop, Mayor. When we get to item two on your regular agenda though, I thought that we might spend some time and let Chris kind of walk you through the fiber system.
Well, Chris was tricking me. He came in and said he had to do this because he had a last-minute change. Where is he?
I'm right here, sir.
Oh, remember you said you came. I looked serious once you were serious about that.
Why are they all serious?
Okay. I thought it was something that you said that wasn't on the agenda or something. Okay.
We never do anything that's not on the agenda, don't we?
Okay, let's go ahead then. Item one. Item two.
So this is the dark fiber project. I thought it might be interesting. I did get a couple of questions today about this item, so I thought it might be good to have Chris walk through kind of the fiber system that we have and what this brings to the table.
And there wasn't a TV in here earlier?
No, it's a lot of work. A lot of work. What do you want?
Pass those around.
Yes, sir. Take one of those, and I'll pass them around, and...
You can just couple that way. How's that?
And so, what I'd like to do, I know when we talk about fiber, you know, people's experience levels with fiber differ. I understand that. For me, I know originally when I thought about fiber and glass and cable, it was hard to visualize exactly what, you know, what they were talking about. So one thing that I did, I brought this cable, Councilman Bond. This right here is just a patch cable. So it's a multi-mode cable. There's two modes, kinds of fiber. You have multi-mode and single-mode. Usually, single-mode is what you're going to run if you have stuff like longer distance. But inside that cable is actually glass. And traditionally, you would think of copper or, you know, like your traditional telephone lines. You have category five cable and now six cable, and just like anything else, it's evolving. I know for you, you know, you might not enjoy it too much, but I could sit up here and talk about this all day. So I'm going to try and go fast.
Don't do that.
Try and go fast. Really, at a high level, towards the end, I'll show you a little more detail. Again, if you have any questions, stop me. If you have any questions, I'm probably going to defer all of them to Councilman Gilmore. But no, in all seriousness, please, please do stop. So...
You missed a reading.
Wow, how'd you do that?
Later on.
You look at that putty in your ear. It's not good, sure. So the cable that you're looking at, again, that's something that you're going to go between a panel into a switch. But underground, what you have, same concept, but you have cables, and the outer jacket, it's going to look more like a coax cable. It's really thick, and then you're going to have all these, it's like little, it looks like, almost like a intertwined cable, if you will. It's really the technical membrane of the cable itself. And this little cord, that cord is a glass cable. It's actually glass. And again, it's hard to believe, but it's very flexible, but if you bend it at a ninety-degree angle, it wouldn't break. But that is where all of your data transmissions are going through. Now, when I got here back in 2000, Larry Buchanan had just installed the network. Before then, City of Louisville really didn't have a network. It was all Twin X cables, and you were very limited as to who you could talk with, and really virtually you couldn't, you know, just to a printer maybe from a workstation or actually, at that time, it was a dumb terminal. Now, what you're going to see, this next slide is going to show you, this is more of what you're going to really, what we're talking about laying here as far as underground. And you can see that's made up of, this right here is a depiction of a 64-strand cable, and what we're proposing is a 96-strand cable. When you have single-mode, one thing that you don't, or you might not take into consideration is when we say 96 strands, that really means that you only have 48 usable pair, because you have to have a transmit and receive. Okay? So every time you're going to leverage fiber in between two devices, campuses or whatnot, you're really cutting that in half as far as strands. So you really ought to think about them as pairs. So when we're talking about fiber ring, we have a lot of fiber throughout the city, but there's a difference when we're talking about the ring. We have three major campuses here. Obviously, this campus over in here, Keighley Tower, and then the Annex Building. Now, we did most of our compute as far as from the server side over here at the Annex. But we also have a data center that we've got over here at Old Town, and that's where we're doing our continuity of operations. Now, this is something that a lot of, was funding from the actual crime control. And so you will notice there's two different internet connections here and two different ISP connections coming into this firewall. I didn't mean to touch that. But the reason that we're doing that is for redundancy. And so when you start talking about these pairs of fiber, some of what you see we do in here is the same reason you have two internet connections, it's for redundancy. So, you know, if you're leveraging just one pair and something happens to it, if, you know, an actual cord on a switch goes down that that's plugged into, then you've lost that connectivity. Furthermore, the reason you don't just have one connection here to there, or the difference, if you will, between your regular fiber runs and the fiber ring, is that you truly have another path. So if this fiber got cut in between the Annex and City Hall, that traffic will automatically reroute coming back through the Keighley side. So again, there's, what I'm trying to do here is trying to make the distinction between our actual fiber ring and then the fiber that we have in the rest of the city. Thinking everybody's on board so far. All right, so, when we look at the timeline, in October 2007, we used to be on Time Warner. We leased the fiber lines. We're on a five-year lease. And when that lease came up, we tried to negotiate a new lease. The initial talks were through the roof as far as the price point, and then Time Warner took the stance that they were no longer going to provide this dark fiber to any of their customers. So it put us in a point to where we had to make a decision, you know, what we wanted to do, and we ended up having a capital cost, obviously, a large capital cost to install a fiber network. At that point in time, fiber was extremely expensive. Now, copper is really as expensive, if not more, than your fiber cable. But when we went to go do this, we looked at laying everything underground. The reason you want to lay your fiber underground is it's less susceptible to breaks. Really, digging is the only time you're going to have a break. When you're laying it overhead, you know, you can have all kinds of issues. It could be from weather or anything else for that matter. But what we found is that when we went out to bid, a million dollars was our price point. That was our budget. And in order to do this entire ring, one, it was going to be underfunded at that price point, and two, there were portions that we found that we actually could have laid underground at that point in time. One of the things that we had to do is we had to get a variance. From staff went to council to get a variance to actually lay fiber overhead, because at that point in time, we weren't going to, I don't believe we were allowing any new overhead lines. So when we looked on the, on the west side, over by the Annex, there weren't any existing poles at that point in time. And so, we ended up, the majority of the fiber on the west side was buried. And then when we get over here on the Keighley side, we came, we go underground at Grandy's Lane, and we come back, but when we come up over Cowan all the way to Keighley, all that's running overhead as we speak today. And then when we got into the Old Town District, we actually had some complaints as far as running the fiber overhead with some of the residents, and we were going to have to trim some trees back, things of that nature. And so portions over here in the Old Town District as we speak today are underground. What we're proposing is that all of this fiber actually be buried underground in this agenda item that you can see. So in 2008, we awarded the bid, started construction for a 24-strand dark fiber network. At the time, that seemed robust enough to carry out what we were going to do for the foreseeable future. In September 2010, Dent County came to us, and they wanted to try and leverage some of our fiber for some of their existing facilities. So we entered into an interlocal agreement with the county, and they actually were paying us for usage of our fiber. They were using two strands, one pair. In January 2012, they came back with a second amendment, and, because they wanted four pair of fiber, or four strands, so two pairs. Which really worked out good for us, because we were building campuses over at Railroad Park that we needed connectivity to, and so we leveraged in this agreement to utilize four strands of their fiber. So again, two pair. One to Timber Creek that we utilized for the traffic project, another pair over to Railroad Park, which then also fed Animal Control. And at this point in time, we were actually owing them. Now, in 2013, I bring this up because we had another fiber opportunity that really fell in our lap, and I don't want to get it confused with our current fiber ring, but that's the Unite Private Network Agreement. And Unite is an ISP service that really sells to school districts for the most part. And so when they, when they came to the city, they were looking to fulfill obligation with all ISP, and we were able to, at that point in time, negotiate the lease, if you will, really an evergreen lease. So it was one-time payment for us, a one-time payment as far as capital. Now, any type of maintenance, potentially, there's a cost there. But again, a lease for this fiber everywhere they laid throughout Louisville. So we have 12 pair, 24 strands, everywhere that Unite network runs. Now again, that's totally separate of that core network design, but that was something that we were able to leverage in this agreement, and quite frankly, it would have been several million dollars for us to have that building, you know, built out. And we ended up paying a little over 300,000 for that. And now today, what we're wanting to do is we're wanting to take that infrastructure. We did this originally back in 2008. We laid a second conduit everywhere we laid everything underground with a foresight that at some point in time, we wouldn't want to expand it. By doing that, it's a lot cheaper to truly run the fiber. When you look at running fiber underground, the majority of your cost is actually the labor from the boring. Per foot, you're looking at a little over $7 a foot, whereas the material is about 70 cents. And the actual labor to pull the material is about the same as actual material itself. So pulling versus boring, huge difference. When we originally looked to go underground with our fiber, we got a bid for about $400,000. And during the same time, the county came to us and they wanted more fiber. Again, we didn't have it to give, and I'll show you a slide here in a second that will depict that. But we started to talk to them about opportunity of potentially going into a project together to save costs on all parties. And what we came up with is to actually have two separate strands of fiber, two separate 96 strands. So two separate cables, like you saw before, the bundled cables, one for the city, one for the county. We would leverage that second conduit that was already run throughout the city, and then everywhere it was overhead, it would be underground. By going in together with this, it's advantageous for the county, obviously, because we already have the conduit. It's advantageous to the city, because we were going to have to do the same work anyway. Now they're paying half of the labor cost. But we talked about, well, why did we, you know, why did we think about laying more fiber at the time? Well, I talked to you about the cost, but initially, you've got, you know, your servers, your PCs, your printers, you don't have that much network traffic. Then you start to have multimedia services, and then the internet, you're having more streaming stuff. You start to outsource stuff to the cloud, like your email. We have wireless communication systems that are now coming in. Telephone systems, all going over the network. Video surveillance systems going over the network. Faxing, oh, it looks like an old picture, but now we do all electronic faxing. People still fax, it's just a different way to do it. Access points, wireless infrastructure. The more you add, teleconferencing, the more you add, what I'm getting at is that bandwidth, think of it just like a one-lane highway. And more services, more cars that get on there, the more, obviously, bandwidth that you're going to utilize. Here recently, we just went in with this timekeeping system that's all network-based. And last but not least, on your server side, you've got to look at being able to replicate this data for your continuity of operations, right? So you're talking about having data from Old Town going back to the Annex and vice versa. You want to be able to protect your data. You also have to be able to back this data up. And so when we're talking about this, you don't use the same highway, per se, to do all of these various tasks. What this is showing right here, and I'm not going to go into it, I'm just going to show you real quick to show the allocation. This is just showing the pairs of fiber that we're using today between the Annex and City Hall. And these first four pairs are assigned to Dent County. They're utilizing for their own services. These two right here that say SAM, that's what we're doing for our actual replication back and forth. So that's disk infrastructure, totally different. Nine and 10, that's all wireless traffic. 11 and 12, that's one pair, that's the only pair that we have open today. These two pairs, these are for our 10-gig connectivity back throughout our whole ring. This is something that we recently did, I think recently, about a year and a half ago. We used to have 1-gig fiber infrastructure. Well, that infrastructure itself, that cabling, is capable of going up to 10 gig, but on the switch side, you have to have transceivers that are capable. So it's really changing apart out in the switch. But then what you can do is you can take these two links and team them together. So now in essence, I've made a 20-gig pipe. This guy right here, this OTB, that's just a way to actually stand VLANs up on two sides. And these two guys right here, this is a backup link, a secondary link, that's still 1 gig, it's teamed together, it's 2 gig, but that's in case this link cable went down. And then this right here, this layer two for BTP, that has to do with those ISP services. So if this internet connection goes down, everything still works over here. So as you can see, we don't have any expansion, even if we wanted to give the county something, we wouldn't be able to. You might think that, well, 96 strands, 48 pair, that sounds like a lot. And I would have told you, well, back in 2007, 24 strands sounded like a lot. When you look at the future, if you will, just like I told you, this 10-gig link you can team together to make 20 gigs. Well, what ends up happening, this infrastructure that we're proposing here, you'll always be able to use it. There's not a faster medium, if you will, as far as network connectivity. But what you're going to see happen is you're going to start to take these links, and you'll have transceivers on your switch side that'll be able to team these links to start to make 40-gig connections and 60-gig connections, and on and on. And so now what used to only take one pair will take four pair to actually get a link. So does that help explain the need? Okay, so the other thing I wanted to show you real quick, I wanted to kind of give you an idea of the fiber that the city has access to. Everything in red right here, the square, if you will, really represents your fiber ring. As we speak today, underground, underneath 35, at Grandy's Lane, all of that's buried. It's roughly 27 feet underground. We're proposing to do the same thing over here at College, where we go under. Right now, all that's overhead. This portion, this portion over here is currently all, what did I say? Sorry, is all overhead, going from Cowan all the way to Keighley. All of that would be buried. In this proposal, the only thing that we would still have left that would be running overhead would be this path down the valley, so that connects the senior center as well as your water tower over here on 3040, and that has to do with your traffic network, as well as this portion that we have over here on South Railroad Street that goes up to Railroad Park. The rest of the city fiber infrastructure would be in underground. I also wanted to pick this, point this out. If you'll notice in the agenda item, the county's portion is substantially larger than the city's portion. And the reason being is because they want to run a separate fiber link all the way from over here at Valley down to 407. And so that would be at the county's cost, 100 percent. Everything else is a shared cost, but that one portion, that's what really inflates their cost. These dark green lines and blue lines, that's all of the Unite fiber that we're able to leverage. So you see our footprint more than doubled by being able to allocate that within our Any questions that you guys might have?
Children's advocacy center.
What?
Children's advocacy center, isn't it?
Yes.
Children's advocacy, in order to set cost of the children.
It is cost, isn't it?
No.
No.
Cost is up, it's children's advocacy.
407?
Yeah, they're cross, 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 you being all up in there. Very clear?
Good. Okay. Well, to make sure that this isn't boring, and particularly knowing that we have another gig in that other room here in a minute, we're going to go ahead to item three. Thank you, Lynn. Item four.
She's just expanding your policy to allow recruitment incentives for your detention officers, as well as your police officers in this picture.
Item five.
In your backup, you've had a copy of the minutes from the Transportation Board, and that was a draft that was in your backup. They have not been approved by the board yet, but they did have some significant typos in them. And so David actually handed out to you a corrected version, and the yellow highlights you have are those corrections. There really isn't a category called minor, it's really not major.
This is just backup, there's no changes in it?
Yes, sir, just clarifying the backup.
Okay. Item eight.
Fair, I'll be abstaining on this because it involves my employer, Dent and Central Presale District.
Okay. Anything else, counsel? See it? Julie?
Yes, sir.
Donna?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're adjourned. It is 7 o'clock. We do have a forum. We'll call the city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is invocation, who will be given by myself. Councilman Tierney is not here. And then the pledge, the American and Texas flags will be by Mayor Protem Ferguson.
If you would, please, right? Most gracious Almighty God, thank you so much for giving us the freedom that we have. Thank you for giving us this country in which we live, these homes in which we live, this We ask your blessing on us tonight as we make decisions that will affect our community and this country. We ask us to make sure that we use your wisdom and your sights. We ask a special blessing on those who are oppressed, those who are hungry, and those who are alone. We also ask a special blessing on those who, every day of their life, get up and fight for justice and truth and freedom so that we might have this free life here in America. We thank you for their service. We ask that all those who don't know you will come to know your love, your mercy, and your grace. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledges to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
I have a very special proclamation that we want to make tonight, and I've asked Officer Denver Burstfield to join me down here tonight to receive this proclamation. I guess one of the most things I'm proud of in our community is our police and fire department. We have a lot of wonderful people that work in our city here for us, and they do it very diligently. Yet everywhere I go, as being mayor, in the different functions I attend, other council members and mayors ask me how it is that we have such a fine staff, as far as, all of our staff really, but in particular to our police and fire. And I think that's because we have great leadership here, but I think it's most of all because we have a council that decides to set parameters and give them goals, but then we step back and let them do their job. And I'll say that they do a wonderful job at it, and many times, they're putting their life on line. We just had the last meeting, we just had a lifesaver award, isn't that what that's?
Valor.
A valor award. And these men and women in the police department, many times, without giving it a second thought, just jump out there and put their life on line on a daily basis. So with that, I would like to give a special proclamation to you and your fellow coworkers for the work that y'all do here in our community each and every day of your life. Whereas, there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Louisville Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, 36 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 117 officers killed in 2014 and 156 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families of United States, and United States flag should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Dean Euclid, Mayor of the City of Louisville, Texas, and on behalf of Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 10 through 16, 2015, as National Police Week, and May 15, 2015, as Police Memorial Day. And the City of Louisville urge all of our citizens to make every effort to express your heartfelt appreciation to the men and women who have sacrificed their lives to guard us and our loved ones against all who would violate the law, proclaim this fourth day of May 2015. I just want to give you this and say thank you very much for all that you do. And I think he does want to get a photo here, so, okay, there you go. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, sir. Louisville Police Department would really like to thank our mayor, our city council, all of our, all of our city staff, and all of our citizens for all the support that's shown to us. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is visitor, visitor citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on the, on these items at this meeting. Do have the speaker card filled out by Caroline Barrend. If you'd please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Caroline Barrend, and I own the Broad Boutique in Old Town. My address is 308 Highland Lake Drive in Highland Village. I'm back here in front of you once again to talk about the plaza and several other issues. I understand there was some sort of meeting today about the park, but I had no idea. No one told me. I heard about it at about 4 o'clock this afternoon, so I don't know what that involved. But if I am going over something that was covered in that, I would like for y'all to tell me. I am very concerned about what's going on down here. There's daily just a handful of workers, and I wa- There's daily just a handful of workers, and I walk to the park on Sunday morning, and there's so much work that needs to be done. I really don't see how it's ever gonna be done in time for even Western Week. I can't, I really, at this point, can't understand why a new contractor wasn't brought in and this project finished. We've been waiting down here for two years for this project to be finished. I have a roof on my building at 119 West Main that I've been waiting for months to be roofed, but there's piles of rocks behind my building that, for some reason, even though there's a front loader and a forklift back there, they can't be moved, for some reason, I don't know what it is. I'm sure if those rocks were out in front of City Hall, they'd have been moved a long time ago. I was told by Donna that it was out of the city's control, that y'all have no control over a contractor. I also find that just, I mean, if I have a contractor at my house, I am in control of that contractor, he is not in control of me. So now my building continues to leak. My roofer has called Mark Wall on several occasions, only to be told, oh, I'll get him moved, I'll get him moved, I'll get him moved. That was April 9th, he still hasn't done anything. I, I just can't get it. So anyway, my, my building's sitting there leaking because, for some reason, rocks can't be moved. I don't understand how a city cannot control a contractor. I, as well as other merchants in Old Town, we've suffered long enough, and I really, I implore y'all to do something about this. It, it's ridiculous. By the way, as I told you last time, still no, I haven't had any kind of response or anything, only a letter from the city saying, sorry, the contractor was responsible for blowing out all of your phone lines, your computers that I had to replace, I had to file under my own insurance, I had to pay a thousand dollar deductible. And I really, I've kind of let that go, but the more I see that's going on back here, the madder I get, and there is really no excuse for something not to be done about that. I, I should not have to be out a thousand dollars because a contractor that is incompetent blew out all the electricity, and I'm not the only one it affected. It affected several other businesses which never came forward, and I don't know why they didn't, but they have it. I really feel like there is a lot of interest in new business coming in, but there's not a lot of support for existing businesses. And I believe that that's something that should change. Those of us that have been down here for a long time, I'm not informed about anything, like I wasn't informed about whatever that meeting was today, about the park. And I think that there should be a newsletter, or something sent out to every business, just like when y'all come by and say, we're gonna close down all the streets for Western Week, or Chalkway, or whatever it is. There needs to be something that's brought to us that says, okay, this week, this is what we expect to have done, and this is what we're shooting for in the future. Everybody is just left in the cold, all we hear are rumors about what's happening and what's going on, and I really don't think that's very fair for those of us who pay taxes and collect taxes and everything else that we do for Old Town. I got a couple of other things, there's still parking issues, I call the police department daily, they've gotten to know me, and they're always very kind, but I've been told that I'm taking away from the 9/11 calls. When I call, I might keep an officer from going to a 9/11 call. And I told them that I didn't want that to happen in any way, but that I feel like we need some sort of, if we have, if the city put up two-hour parking signs, then they need to be enforced, that or take them down, because they mean nothing. Also, there's a lot of speeding going on down Main Street. I saw, I see daily cars running past everybody in the crosswalk, running the red light at Main and Mill. They've almost run over my husband, Amanda Ferguson's husband, and one of my employees about a month ago got hit in the crosswalk, she got the driver's, she got the license plate, but she missed one of the numbers and they couldn't find out who it was, so, and then she got cursed out by that person in the car. So we, there's something that's gotta be addressed about all of the speeding and the running the red light at Main and Mill, it's a daily occurrence. Just a couple of other things that I don't know if any-
If you could, you had five minutes, and it's gone, it's gone way past five minutes, so if you could just wrap it up.
Okay, I just got a couple more things. I'm concerned about the tables and chairs in Ferguson Plaza, that they're gonna be stolen. I don't know if anything, if they're supposed to be nailed, not nailed down, but locked down, but I'm afraid those are gonna disappear. Also, I feel like the plants out here, I don't know if they've been watered, but they're all looking kind of droopy. And that's really all I have to say, I hope that y'all will take my concerns seriously, and I would appreciate a follow-up on what's going on down here.
Okay.
Because I've been here 25 years, and every day I have no idea what's going on down here.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the City Council, will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, the speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I did not have anyone fill out any cards, I did not have anyone ask to have any items pulled. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve consent agenda.
Aye.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is consideration of amendment to the city thoroughfare plan to change the designation of Valley Parkway from Round Grove Road to State Highway 121 from a major carrier principal four-lane divided to a non-major carrier principal four-lane divided. The City of Lewisville Master Thoroughfare Plan currently indicates Valley Parkway as a non-major carrier from its northernmost extent at Garden Ridge Boulevard south to Round Grove Road, where it becomes a major carrier from Round Grove Road to State Highway 121. This designation was established prior to the construction and opening of this section of Valley Parkway in 2010, and the previous reconstruction of State Highway 121. Because actual traffic demand is not as high as recently anticipated, the major traffic carrier designation is not warranted, the change in the designation specifically reduces required distance between driveways, distance between driveways and street intersections, and where deceleration lanes are required. The Transportation Board recommended, considered this item during the April 7, 2015 meeting, and voted six-zero to recommend approval of the major carrier designation. Requestation is that council approve the amendment to the thoroughfare plan removing the major carrier designation for Valley Parkway as set forth in the caption of, uh, Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the amendment.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve as presented, second by Councilman Ferguson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is consideration of amendment to the city thoroughfare plan to create a new designation for Main Street from Interstate Highway 35E to Herod Street from P-4D-100 right-of-way to a P-4D urban 90-foot right-of-way. At present, the thoroughfare plan describes the section of Main Street from Interstate Highway 35 to Herod, Herod Street as a P-4D 100-foot wide-of-way, although the existing right-of-way is only 90 feet. Staff is recommending this be added to the thoroughfare plan as an additional roadway type category to clarify existing conditions and prevent possible redevelopment issues in Old Town. The Transportation Board considered the item during the April 7, 2015 meeting, and voted six-zero to recommend amending the thoroughfare plan, adding the P-4D urban 90-foot right-of-way roadway type category. Requestation is council approve the amendment to the thoroughfare plan adding the P-4D urban 90-foot right-of-way roadway type as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Durham, a second by Councilman Gilmore, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of interlocal agreement between the North Central Texas Council governments and the City of Lewisville to provide a signal re-timing plan for Main Street from Garden Ridge to Interstate Highway 35E, and authorizing for the city manager to execute the agreement. The North Central Texas, Texas Council governments is sponsoring a program to provide a traffic signal re-timing plans along routes of significance within the Dallas-Fort Worth area. Main Street FM 1171 is a candidate roadway, and this program will provide a re-timing plan for traffic signals on Main Street from FM 2499 and Flower Mound to I-35 in Lewisville. The subject agreement only addresses the intersections in Lewisville, however, the intent of the project is to time and coordinate the operation across both cities. Although the program requires a 20% local match from participating cities, TechDOT will pay the required match, since FM 1171 is an owned system roadway. No city funding will be required to participate in this program. This item is considered an administrative action, so was not presented to the Transportation Board. Requestation is that council approve the agreement as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Gilmore?
I'm just impressed we have an agreement with TechDOT that doesn't cost us even a little bit of money, so I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve, presented, second by Councilman Durham, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is consideration of waiving the penalty and interest on property tax account 169228DEN for 2014. Rudy?
Mayor, I'll be abstaining on this item, it involves my employer, Denton Central Appraisal District.
Wendy Powers, the taxpayer of the above identified property, has requested a refund of the penalty and interest assessed and paid on the account for 2014. Ms. Powers acquired the identified property from Mr. Gordon Pierce on July 3, 2014. The appraisal district prorated the value of the property tax based on that date, and the original tax statements were mailed to Mr. Gordon Pierce. The ownership records, however, were not changed until December 26, 2014, after which the tax statements were mailed to Ms. Powers. Ms. Powers promptly paid the base tax amount on February 20, 2015, based on the information provided by Dicken County Tax Assessor and the city's tax collection attorney. The circumstances in this case satisfy the waiver provision in state law. Requestion is that council approve the waiver of the penalty and interest on the property tax account 169228DEN for 2014. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the waiver as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as presented, second by Councilman Vaughn, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go with reports. Okay, Nika? Nothing? Bob? Chief?
Yes, sir, Mayor, I just wanted to remind everybody again, real quick, that we are having our eighth annual Keeping Tradition Alive Symposium this week. It begins Thursday morning. Opening ceremonies are at eight o'clock at the Hilton Garden Inn, but would love if you could attend, you and any of the other council members or fellow directors that would like to attend, please join us for breakfast, they begin serving breakfast at 7:00 AM. And then the, again, the opening ceremony will, will get started around 8:00, 8:15. Also, to wrap up the symposium, again, we'll be hosting our Old Town Jam session on Friday night, that should get kicked off. Gates will open around 6:00, and the event will get kicked off around 7:00. And again, as in past couple of years, the Kildares Celtic Rock Band will be in attendance to also play a couple of sets, so should be a good time, we're keeping our fingers crossed that the weather cooperates with us. And even though the park's not finished, we're glad that it'll be a nice backdrop to the event as well, as far as how it's starting to look, so please join us if you can, we'd love to have you, and we look forward to having another successful event this year.
I do encourage all council akin to attend, unfortunately I'll be in San Antonio that Thursday, hopefully I'll be back in time Friday night, but if not, I know it'll be a great success. We appreciate all y'all are doing, and I know it's a welcome reception that you provide for these people from all across the country that come in, we appreciate that. Linda?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about. First of all, I wanted to invite all of you to come, on May 22nd, we will be having our employee recognition picnic at Lake Park. We have 105 employees who will be celebrating a milestone year between five to 30 years. We actually have 10 employees that will be celebrating their 30 years of employment this year. Including in that, we have both Ms. Barrend and Ms. Plaster who have milestone years, so we hope that you guys can come out and join us. Secondly, I wanted to talk to you about a program, we've entered into a partnership at the City of Lewisville with the Lewisville Independent School District, and it is a program where we're going to be having an internship to assist children with dis-, or it's not children, high school students with disabilities. They will be participating in a nine-week, a nine-month program, where they will be immersed in our work here, will work as interns, so that they will gain competitive marketable skills to help them get jobs in the future. I have a video, I would like, just a, just a one, one and a half minute video, I would like to, so you could see kind of what the program's about. Adam, will you play the video?
A new program is helping students with developmental disabilities in the transition from school to work. Seven on your side, Laura Thomas, takes us to there on the job train.
At Spartanburg Regional, you'll find Tyler Smith hard at work.
Thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six.
Busy.
You gotta take your time with this.
And also grateful.
Know my round, way around the hospital, better people's skills and more work skills.
Tyler is one of seven Dorman High School students, all part of a new program in the state called Project Search.
I've been teaching almost 30 years. I've simulated jobs in classrooms, tried to pretend we're doing work, and you know, a lot of valuable skills learned there, but this is the ultimate.
Students from District Six's Special Education Program work in different areas of the hospital, learning on-the-job skills they can take with them.
Just watching the development in the 10 weeks that this, our students have been here on campus, the competence that they have and what they're able to do, it's, it's amazing.
We get responses like, what disability? These students are great, you know, and they have just become an integral part of the environment and the staff.
District Six is the first in South Carolina to pilot the program.
They have significant disabilities, but they also have abilities, and it's the abilities that we need to highlight, those wonderful skills that they have, that, that can make them successful and can lead to their success in employment.
And success is just the word to describe students like Tyler.
I like helping people, that's, that's very important to me. Help this hospital grow more and get it better every day.
And Spartanburg, Laura Thomas, seven on your side.
At the end of the year, Spartanburg Regional might even offer some of the students jobs to stay at the hospital. District Six tells us several other districts in the state plan to visit the program to see how they can implement it in their schools. Project Search is in dozens of states across the country, including parts of North Carolina and Georgia. Since it started in 1996 in Cincinnati, it has grown to more than 300 sites around the world.
So at this, the Medical Center of Lewisville has hosted this program before, we're the second site to join in with LISD, and we're the first city in the country, so we're really excited about the opportunity to have these kids here. We'll have coaches from LISD here to work with them, and we've got a lot of job opportunities here where they can gain valuable skills.
I commend the city on this, I think this is just wonderful, just another way we're continuing to work with our school district and our youth here in our community to make sure that we offer everything possible for those. Thank you for that. Chief? Carol? Have you seen, have you seen Councilman Gilmore's video he has of him letting water out? It looks like, it looks like the Roaring River.
And no, I don't have it hooked up to the video system tonight.
No, and I will say, this is the first time since late 2012 that we've actually been above conservation, so we're about two feet over conservation, so you can tell that when you drive over the lake, everything out there that they're working on is pretty much underwater, so that's actually good.
That is good. We appreciate all your work with that, Carol, thank you. Gina? Brenda? Dave? Mr. Back? Councilman Durham?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I'd like to-
ISD art teachers are coming out to do some onsite work with the kids that are present. So, should be a really funny event, it's from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, right here in the heart of Old Town, and I hope you'll be able to join us.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Baron?
No, sir.
Councilman Ferguson?
Thank you, mayor. Got several things coming up, the MCL Grand, in fact, this weekend with Chalk This Way is gonna be a busy weekend, so women leading businesses coming back to the MCL Grand on May 8. That's presented by the Lewisville Chamber of Commerce. That's the same day KTA's in the evening, so I guess spend all day. And then Chalk This Way the next day. Also, a reminder there, tomorrow's the last day of early voting and then final voting will be that May 9, Saturday. The Actors Conservatory Theater will be doing its annual Toady Awards on May 16. I wanna throw in an additional note here, for those who know Joanne Brooks, she has officially retired from the Actors Conservatory Theater. I don't think a lot of people are aware of that. She will be staying on to help them as they transition and find a new director, but she's certainly poured her heart and soul into a theater that has never turned away a single child, no matter their abilities or disabilities, to have an opportunity on the stage, and I think she's done a tremendous job for the city of Lewisville and deserves it. Then, on May 23, Grammy Award winners Max Baca and the Los Texas Maniacs will be performing in the Texas Tune Series, again, May 23 at 8 o'clock. We always have the Visual Arts League Acoustic Jam on Friday evenings and our art exhibits right now, we have Nature's Embrace, a solo exhibition by Jordan Grimes that'll actually start on May 9 and run through June 20. That's in the main gallery and then in the north hallway, the exhibit graffiti, street art will continue until May 30. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vaughn?
Nothing, mayor.
Counselor? Julie? Officer, once again, like I say earlier, we appreciate you being here and everything you and your fellow team members do each and every day, sir. Want to take just a moment to pay a special recognition to our former mayor, Mayor Gene Carey here, who seemed to snuck in back here at the back. I didn't see him come in, but he's sitting back here. Certainly good to see you here tonight, Mayor Carey, especially being my last night of a full council meeting, and so with that, I'd like to thank a few people that have helped me along the way. Don't do that. First, I want to thank God, my Savior Jesus Christ, for, as Gene will tell you, always taking care of me and always loved me in spite of my sins and shortcomings. I thank my mother and father for the home they gave me and the upbringing and the way they raised me, the things they taught me in life. I ain't doing this. Where's Jerry Goller? He'd keep me laughing. I want to pay a special thank to my wife and children who have supported me and encouraged me over these last 17 years, the last six of which I'm in, mayor. It's, I couldn't have done it without them and I appreciate their, sharing their time. I want to pay a special thank you to our youth. The youth are what inspire me here in our community. That's how I actually got started in community service here, was coaching Little League teams, basketball, football and stuff, and then got involved in the booster club, and then you just progress and you just keep getting involved in stuff, before you know what, somebody's got you hiding in a corner and saying, "You need to run for council." But the youth continue to inspire me and I am so proud of our youth that we have each year here in this city and that's why I am so proud and I hope we will continue to have, allow them to have their homecoming parade down through our Main Street and actually culminate here in front of city steps of City Hall. From what I understand, there's no other state and no, no other city in state of Texas that does that, and I know it means a lot to those children. I shouldn't say children, I should say youth. I want to thank all of the citizens who have supported me, encouraged me, and helped me throughout these many years. It's been a wonderful time. I want to thank current council and past councils and mayors that I have worked with over the years. It's been a wonderful relationship. I've learned a lot from each and one of you. I want to thank our staff for all that you've done for me and support you've given me. It's been a blessing to learn from you and to work with you and I thank all of you for that. So with that, I just want to tell you that I've enjoyed it and I've learned a lot.
Mayor, may I?
You sure, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, mayor, appreciate it. You have been a tremendous friend and I thank you very much.
Mayor, could I just take a moment and ask everyone to please stand and thank you for everything you've given to this community?
Oh, you don't need to do that. Very much, and it wasn't me. It was a, it was a collaboration of all of us together and that's what it's all about.
Hook, though, you know, you've got another meeting.
Well, I'm already working with the youth and the schools, committing to read to them on a regular basis, so I enjoy that. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, issues related to the construction of Old Town Park Plot, legal issues related to the construction of Old Town Park Plaza, and Section 551.071, City of Lewisville versus City of Farmers Ranch and Camelot Landfield TXLP, Cause Number 412, CV 00782, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, Sherman Division, Texas Commission on Environmental Equality, Modification and Municipal Solid Waste Permit Number 1312A, and Texas Commission Environmental Equality Application to Obtain Municipal Solid Waste Permit Amendment, Permit Number 1312B. Section 551.072, Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Negotiations, will now convene into closed session. Back to regular session, council, is any action be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion adjourned by Councilman Ferguson, and second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I wish it had zoomed out.
I know, I'm sorry.
That's all right.